Let me see. Okay. I'm waiting for some people to come in. I've had a long week, so that's why I am not live, but I wanted to check in with you all. See how you're doing. Drop some jewels. I am your host. I am ten behind the mic. Indeed. Let's see if some people gonna clap. Tap in. Let me see. Hey. Nobody joined in just yet? Well, I'll give a few minutes. I just wanted to go over the hearing held at the Schaumburg Center for Black American Research. And I had the opportunity of attending the hearing and the open panel and how the New York State Commission on reparations is supposed to be providing recommendation to Governor Hochul on who should be entitled, the lineage base. Uh, they also had various different professors that spoke and how they are retrieving the information and whether or not it should be monetary, monetary reparations. And should it be a lineage line reparations? Uh, should certain things be provided in the community? And it was very interesting. And at one point, it got very heated as well. Uh, if you're new and you're just coming in, I'm discussing the hearing on the Commission for Reparations for New York State that I, uh, made it my business to attend because of my lineage line. And basically, uh, do research and because of Wall Street and slaves being sold and, you know, the burial ground over there, um, on West Street. Uh, New York State was a focal point on the distribution and the sale of slaves. So therefore, they're looking for to see if people that were enslaved here in New York State, should they be compensated for what has been done? And as I spoke to so many different, uh, things within my lineage line in my experience, because it was initially ambiguous because, um, it's strictly for New York State. But however, I need to pull up the legislation to really like kind of understand and read it. Because they, uh, after I spoke and let them know a lot of the particulars and how the enslavement of my lineage line, my ancestors and my parents migrating from the South and coming to New York and coming along with all of that baggage and the, um, systematic impact of slavery. Even though my grandfather is a product and the whole lineage line, uh, we have found our, uh, sensors, um, on ancestry.com. And I've attended various different, um, family reunions on the Owen side, which is my maternal side. And, uh, we have gathered a lot of information on my dad's side, which is the Tillman. And, um, it was very interesting. And the systematic and how the discrimination against myself and, uh, my family and my parents and just obtaining simple education for especially children and the traumas that I lived with and still have complex because of the many things that I had to endure as a a youngster because of the in-depth of my mother in particular and father. But let me just get into my mom being raised in a very small, still undeveloped town. At one time, they were developing it. Uh, Columbia, North Carolina, in the county of Tyrell County. In, uh, nineteen seventy-seven, I had the opportunity to go down there and they had a club called Billy Wood's Place. And, um, I had the opportunity to rap. This is before it was called hip-hop. And ironically, it was Big J and Big Mike that were already spinning on two turntables. So there's a lot of things I don't want to kind of deviate, but, um, when I went back down there years later, eh, well, let me just take a step back. Upon going down there when I was younger than nineteen seventy-seven, there was blatant segregation. And even a couple of years back, when my grandmother was in the hospital and even when she passed, because we have a family plot down there, you could still see the segregation and having a discussion with my uncle during Christmas time in, uh, Columbia, South Carolina. You know, he stated that, you know, there was supposed to be land that had supposed to be allotted. But if you know anything about the East Insure, a lot of the slaves that probably, uh, landed there, it is basically a lot of swampland. So, uh, with that being said, with New York State, uh, come to find out that I am eligible in my lineage line, that's if it moves forward. Uh, personally, I think that it's a kind of fluff with the Democrats because I have little faith. It doesn't matter whether or not it's the blacks or the whites. Because my family has directly been impacted by the, um, bureaucracy, the, uh, corruption and, uh, various different things that, um, have been an eyesore. And it's just horrible. So with the loss of my daughter and not being able to get adequate services and had we been white, perhaps my daughter would still be alive. And had I been white, perhaps when I needed to leave home with my mom who suffered with mental illness and was, had various different stents in, uh, Creemaw as a youngster because of all that she endured as a youngster being, uh, raised in the South. So basically, my suggestion was that we really need to deal with the discrimination and the divide within, uh, the black race. And I found it to be very interesting because there were other people that spoke and it was, uh, educational moment for me and aha moment as well of different people's intake and, uh, output and their experiences. And one which was very interesting that the language needs to be specific because it's some of us that have adopted the black. It was African-American. It went from Negro and Viga and all of that. But however, we are the freemen. You know, a lot of us are the freemen from slaves. You know, we had to get our freedom. And one individual specified that that language was imperative because of, um, the amendment and what Lincoln had, uh, implemented before, you know, he was offed. And, uh, the forty acres and the mule. And, you know, four hundred years later, we've still impacted. Our communities are impacted. And you have other groups that say, well, that was so long ago. But I can stand on two feet and say from my experiences, um, whether it be employment, whether it be health services, educational, uh, and health services includes mental health. My family has been, uh, impacted. And when you look around in various different communities, you know, um, our black men, well, our freemen men and boys don't have the proper resources um, to get them off the street, to stop selling the drugs. You know, everybody wants to be a rapper. Everybody wants to be in this hip-hop. But from my experience as a hip-hop pioneer and, um, seeing how it has involved, evolved and what happened in the beginning with the innocence of the pre-teens and the parks like myself and then the, uh, the grape and, uh, petty and all of those different things. And even now, it's the bickering and it's the divide that everything began and should have, it's what began in the Bronx. It went worldwide. When, um, a lot of people are bickering with me saying, "I wasn't there." However, I was in Queens and I was everywhere as I got older. And so the same thing can be said about the other boroughs. You know, you weren't there. And the way that the communities are comprised of, everything is not a project. And, um, there is various different places where residents, uh, residential neighborhoods. And one of the reasons I can say in, uh, South Jamaica, the Lincoln Park, Ajax and Van Wigg Park is that it was residential. We didn't have Boys and Girls Club. We didn't have community centers. We had those parks and we had the music that our ancestors always used to entertain. And, um, rapping just did not begin in, uh, nineteen seventy-three. And it's ironic how the narratives are changing and the disintegration of truths. And what I found kind of ironic because of so many different stories. And me in particular, I'm not with the go along, get along because I was there. I was young. I had older cousins. I had older friends. Or I had friends that had older siblings. So, you know, they say all sorts of things when they're trying to discredit and when it comes to money and when it comes to greed and the, all the things that have in a way oppressed us overall. And it's very sad. But one individual got up there on the, uh, mic and because it was a discussion that, you know, this reparation recommendation or report that the legislation would decide, you know, which I don't understand. It's not really up to the states because the federal government has to issue money. And that was another discussion. Because it's just as though I felt like it's a waste of money, really. And it's just a diversion. Oh, now the Democrats want to do so much for us. In essence, they were the ones that really implemented and wanted to keep slavery. You know, if you do some background history and public, uh, public policy and the public administration and just history in general. Um, and one, another individual was very upset for the simple fact that this particular commission has asked for an additional eighteen months. The research and the obtaining information and the feedback from this public hearing was supposed to be completed within eighteen months. So one, some, one individual, she, uh, inquired, no, she didn't inquire. She came at them. And she said that, you know, eighteen months, and I think this is BS, and, you know, here you'll want more money. And the chair commissioner, uh, specified that they didn't request for extra money. And, uh, someone else said it said that it should go to the immigrants that came here to New York State because if it wasn't for the Jamaicans, we wouldn't have hip-hop. Ah, so you can imagine how the audience was in uproar in regards to that because so many people are aware of that false narrative and how things have been made up and they've been distorted and they have gone really unchecked. Hi, how you doing, girl in Michelle? I'm, I meant to say hi. I didn't, I was looking down at the chat, so please forgive me. Um, but anyway, uh, you know, one person posed that, you know, eighth monetary reparations in regards to other things that needed to be provided in our communities of like eight thousand dollars a month. And other people's suggestions were access to owning property. And I really don't know how that's gonna happen unless it happens like upstate in various different places because here within the five boroughs, they're building just a lot of buildings. And, um, so those things are, you know, issues. And then you had these other various different groups. And one media person was attacking those groups. And at one point, there had to be order in the hearing. Um, and I found it very interesting. But however, like I said, I just wanted to pop in and give you all a brief synopsis of what happened. And I must have dropped my agenda uh, when I was coming home, um, trying to get my ri- ride home the other night. And, um, again, I'm gonna pull up the legislation because I want to read it because it's just not for everybody. It was designed basically for people that were impacted, I guess, here in New York State, uh, through slavery and may have been enslaved here in New York. Well, my personal feelings are that I have been personally enslaved and it's been through our own kind. So I also stated that we needed to deal with the racism and this discrimination and a divide within because you have all of these different cliques, you know, and if you're not in that particular group, then you're not allowed to receive certain promotions or they don't want to tell your history properly like in hip-hop. Uh, the political things, it's a lot of cronyism, nepotism and greed and addiction to capitalism, which has divided us. And I also, you know, from my experience, said that I've been impeded for the simple fact that I'm very candid and I'm straightforward. And I've had to learn to be vocal because I really haven't had too many people to advocate for myself or my family. And I'm a child, uh, uh, sexual survivor as well as adult, um, as a survivor. And I know what it's like to be homeless as a young teenager, being placed, leaving home and being placed in a worse environment and other children too. And being a warrior. And really, I believe that I was born that way. I was born Caesarian breach, can you imagine? And my mom was ill and had all of those issues that when she came and migrated from the South, she was fifteen years old. She gave birth to one of my brothers, my oldest brother, I believe, at thirteen because she had been great by a twenty-nine-year-old. Ironically, I'm in the process of healing that lineage line and the ancestral curses that go along with it. So the work that I'm doing is a spiritual and it's an empowerment. And a lot of people don't really understand and maybe it's not meant for them to understand. But I really believe that things happen on purpose, for a purpose, for the simple fact that when we look at what's going on now, how, you know, the Democratic Party are fighting and going hard for people that have illegally been allowed to cross the border and receive so many services that the citizens here, the freemen, the descendants of the freemen and the free women has still struggling for. And then we have the Uncle Toms within. It, you know, it reminds me of the field people and the house people, Negroes. You understand? And that goes on in every facet. And I can truly say that from my own experience and my own observation and the discriminatory within us. Because we can be objective and we can know something and people will still try to brainwash you because they think that they're going to get, you know, coins or you going to impact or the crab, the crabs in the barrel syndrome. One person can't elevate because the other one wants to keep the person down. And that has been a disservice. And it's also been disingenuous to us on an overall level. And I tell you, the complex trauma that my family has had to endure, like, you know, my oldest daughter, she transitioned on Thanksgiving and my birthday in front of my two special need grandchildren. And there were various different city agencies in the household because there was issues early on, you know, um, with me being in the hip-hop industry before it and once it was named in the elements and a lot of things not on the large scale, like what's going on with the Diddy and being the fact that I had to be strong and I had to fight for me. But a lot of times, people don't understand the high level of what's going on, the manipulation and how that this particular genre of music and probably other genres of music and artistry and performing arts like Weinstein and, and, um, Epstein and all of that stuff has been going on and it is really plagued and leprostained. And even with Afrika Bambaataa, like, uh, those allegations, um, and the, um, history and the rumors and the accounts that have been now known for decades. And to the point that the, uh, Hip-Hop Museum is adamant that he still has a legacy. Because again, like I said, I was down early in the game and I'm not as good like I used to be because I've gone through so many different things. And I have anxiety and I go through things of depression. But I'm such a survivor that I, if I look up, I gotta get up. You know, because I didn't have no other choice. Um, and I damn sure had to fight, especially when you grow up in, in homes and kids' shelter and stuff like that. And to this day, I wonder where all of those children are. And I know a lot of us didn't make it. And, uh, a lot of times, people don't want to see you excel and soar. And with my experience, I've been given the opportunity to acquire wisdom. And I'm unapologetic. And the thing about it is if I know something is wrong and it's not right, I had learned to keep my voice and to say it because the damage that has been done over five decades when it comes to the hip-hop genre and the exploiting of the women and our children, boys and girls. It's ridiculous. And you have people that still want to keep it going on. It's really dark, dark, dark energy that's been in existence. Dark, dark, dark energy that's been in existence. Like I said before, my daughter and my family was impacted. Because of my naivety and making. Bad moves, thinking that it was good, cause I lived in the Bronx too. That Bronx is a very special place, but again, wherever I went, they say hip hop is a lifestyle. Is it really? Or is it way of being or is it state of mind? I think there's been a lot of distortion when it comes to that because. I believe that this. This genre of music, cause they call it a culture, but that culture is tainted, it's not a good culture. And I can say that from firsthand experience and knowing other people's experience. And even those that have been preyed upon and uh. May have older men, now husbands. But if you really dig deep into it, upon their pregnancies, they were teenagers. And for some reason, this was made okay. But this is not anything new. And then the, the men. Feeling that they're entitled to. And that this is just the way it should be. Not everybody is a groupie. It's okay to be a fan, but it's to the extent to, I don't even think. I could say fan is to respect someone in their craft and their artistry. But that doesn't necessarily give the right for anybody to be taken advantage of. And to be cheated out of royalties like Angie Stone. And I'm so sick of people running around here saying that. She was uh done in, cause she spoke out. Like untold and people, listen, we ready over here. We don't give a damn because somebody gotta have enough gall. To stand up for our communities. Because it seems as though this has been manufactured to destroy us. Worldwide and you see that it is people that didn't make as much money because. I know when I was offered to go to Sugar Hill and I met Sylvia Robinson. In Harlem, cause. I knew people in all the boroughs except Staten Island. I didn't hang out in Staten Island. I was up in Yucca's, um money earning Mount Vernon. But I didn't play in any clubs up in Mount Vernon. I did up in Yucca's. And um, you know, I'm doing, I'm working on uh. Uh a memoir, I had been trying and working on it for some years. Now that there's AI, it kinda makes it a lot better because I have bilateral copper tunnel. And um, you know, working. Long hours when I was able to work freelancing, cause I've always had an appreciation. For the creative arts and the performing arts, ever since I was a young girl. Because um before my parents separate, before they split, I should say. Uh on the Tillman side and my mom had a beautiful voice and my brothers, they're blessed with the voice. I was just blessed with the opportunity to rap and, you know, write poetry and um. Through all of the scars of what I've had to endure. And that my daughter, you know. To no fault of her own, you know, being thrown into it because me moving from the Bronx. Back to Queens. On in bad faith, wasn't good faith. And I tell you, it was a hell of a ride. And I'm, some people say, oh, but you made it through, not without any emotional. Um torment and scars and the safety mechanisms. And my daughter just wasn't used to her mom having to fight on that level. And us having to walk upstairs, passing people. Coming in and out of a spot and people knowing. That it was that type of party that referred me to the building. It was just a nightmare. And um then the same people undermined it allegedly. The original owner and um. My daughter's arm was broken twice. It was just a bad cloud. And me being younger, young mother at twenty-three. And still trying to get on and doing studio work and. Being promised and thinking that people are going to right their wrong from when uh. My demo tape for Russell Simmons was purposely, I can say now. I know purposely manipulated that their production would overshadow my vocals. Because of the way that they put the echo in. And then, you know, Russell, like the bad business from the onset. And ironically, he grew up in the same neighborhood than I grew up in, in St. Albans and Hollis. And I remember he was older than us, watching him walk out the window under a trestle. Coming from Hollis Avenue or um, what is that, Farmers? Yeah. But anyway, like I said, that's another story, another segment. But this thing on reparations, I believe it's more hype than anything. I think that it's in a distraction and I don't see it going through. Because there's so many entities, because I think one particular professor and he was white. He talked about how um now their research, they've been doing that on their own. Like various different states like New Jersey, Philadelphia and. I don't have my notes in front of me. They destroyed a lot of their um. Documents, which they weren't supposed to destroy on slaves. You know, because each state, you know, was supposed to keep uh censors and other documentation. And he was able to show on slide shows. It was very interesting and intriguing. And here's a white guy that was more passionate about, you know, righting the wrongs of the past. Than I think a lot of, I would like to say, free people, free men, free women. Not black, because we have to have that distinction. Because again, you know, a lot of people will capitalize. Does that mean the Asians? Everybody has been compensated, except for us. And we're still having problems within our community, which is an epidemic. I can say it's an epidemic. What's going on with Diddy should have never been able to breed and feed. From the first generation of this. And I'm not saying all, but I'm saying a lot. And I've seen personally underage children around adults. And them being preyed upon, cause I was, and friends. Some of them were, you know, those were the groupies, not me. Cause I didn't have to, even with me, you know, knowing of. A lot of the stars that came out of. The area I grew up in and I really believe that I left a lot of the energy there. Because music is energy, it's a vibration and that's why those eight oh eights. And the lyrics, they're almost like spells. You know, they really are. And if it's negative, it's gonna breed negative outcomes. That's why our community is in the shape that it is, it's in now. And again, like I said, I reiterated to the commission that we need to have facilities. That our children, our black boys are able to do things uh under the trades. Cause everybody is not college, to get them off the street. And off the corners and thinking that it's the coolest thing to be a rapper. And you know, hip hop, how many of the elements did they really, did, did, the rappers even use after the eighties? None. You know, and then just think that it has been sourpuss and tainted. And you got a whole clique of people that's just going along with it. And it's a lot of pay to play and that's not what I'm saying to say it's an assumption. It's what I've witnessed, cause I've sat on the education day some years ago. And I have pictures of what happened and I think I'll elaborate that on that later on. But there, sooner or later, reparations is gonna have to come out of that too. And that's another thing that I brought to the table. But uh I started drafting up a synopsis because we had, it was like forty-three people. From this public forum that wanted to speak. So I got there early, cause I believe the early bird catches the worm, but we only had two minutes. And then different people capitalized, but it definitely was an experience. And I'm following it and I'm watching it closely because. I have made several attempts through the courts. And the city, even with the notice of claims to the city. In behalf of what happened to my daughter and the impact of her children. And how agencies were in that household and how it was a massive cover up in. Instead of implementing corrected action and doing the right thing. People was upset because I complained. That's my child. These are my grandkids. What the hell? So it's a modern day slavery going on within us. Because it's a power and it's a control and it's a greed thing. I wanna say this and then I'mma probably close out for the night, cause I'm just exhausted. I was. Been running around for two days and I have, you know, these health things going on and. And I'm taking care of my grandchildren, cause I would not have dared allow them to go into the system. And they messed up, they didn't give me any money for them. And that was okay because I was like, long as I know they're safe and they're taken care of. But these people were supposed to be monitoring my daughter's household. My grandchildren were missing fourteen doctor's appointments. My daughter was like fourteen thousand dollars in a res and rent. In the projects and this was the second time it happened. And my daughter was not even going to the doctors to check on herself. Let alone the mental aspect. And I had found out that they had been trying to contact children's services. And that was another thing, there was other testimonies from other people. That had been placed and forced to care. And the damages, the irreparable dam- damages done. And then the divide and not, and feeling abandoned and. Later on in life, re- reuniting with their biological families. And like I said, I know, I had a friend of me, that boy. I'm still in therapy and healing. But to know that this has been an ongoing thing of continuously dropping balls. Of continuing cover up. Is simply unnerving. It really is. Uh but I'm grateful. That whatever I have to do, these children are gonna be okay. I must say that these morons, these clowns. That's in the hip hop thing. I see it for what it is. I'm not, I don't look at things through rose colored glasses and they know it. I remember one, she's a former executive and she's now uh. Think the communications director for the Hip Hop Museum, cause they changed it from Universal Hip Hop Museum. That's going up in the Bronx and all of that stuff was fluff. And I could feel the energy I learned over decades and years. That my intuition never, never deceives me at all. That it's a whole. Bamboozle. Cause everything that glitters on the outside is not glittering on the inside. And it just. Behooves me that, you know, people would go to that extent. But I wanted to go back before I go on another tangent. Um that executive director told me I would have never gotten a record deal. And we were having discussions on what things should be implemented in the museum. And I really had a great time and as they knew, I was very informative, so that meant I had to be there. I had to be various wares and um. She told me because I asked too many questions. And that's the same individual that said, oh. Don't worry about Africa Bambana's legacy, cause he has a legacy. You need to worry about yours. I mean, back off because men have been being with men for years. And I'm sure it has been in the industry, because I'm not an amateur. And like I told her, and I still stand on four points to this square. We're talking about children, we're talking about the mismanipulation. And the misrepresentation of artists being lured. Under false pretense. And production and, and rights and royalties. Uh still being stolen and have been stolen and a lot of times, just like with Angie Stone. You don't realize it until years later. I have a partner, that happened to her and even though I went through this hell and I lost my daughter. Oh man, my battery is dying, yeah. I lost my daughter and it's just been a freaking nightmare. And it's within. I think uh tomorrow or maybe later on tonight, after maybe I'll wake up the wee hours of the morning. And I'll come back on another live and I'll discuss. I wanna discuss the protests and I wanna discuss how. A lot of immigrants think about us. That have been here and ancestors helped build this country. And how we're being classified and labeled as victims. Yeah, I had a share ride yesterday when I was trying to go to the music care event. And to kinda and connect with Dee from DMC. I run DMC, whereas you know, I'm from that area. Dee DJ'd for me when we were in junior high school in Hurricane and. Born and you know, my history is there. Uh but before them, I was with Future Sounds and I've shared mics with Eddie D who's Ed Lover. And there's a lot of things that they don't want to be unveiled because they don't want me to have the credit. And the history because the narrative that they're shooting out is just simply not correct. It really isn't, because not one person could be all places at one time and I'll stand on that. And I wasn't there all the time up in the Bronx, but I was there. You know, as well as mostly in my hometown when I grew up at. And as a teenager, you know, in the kids home, that gave us a more, gave me a lot of flexibility. Because you know, they don't really wanna share and they really don't wanna give the truths. And I respect what everybody has contributed, their styles and everything. But that's simply not so and a lot of people that weren't able to get off the blocks. And St. Albans and Hollis, I was, I had older cousins in South Jamaica. So you know, I didn't start on the north side, I started on the south side. And I've had to, you know, retrieve uh verification, confirmation. And at this point, I don't want none of my shit to go up in that museum, I just know that there's more than one museum and that I don't have a option. And um so I was trying to go to the music care to find out about their grants and things like that. Cause I'm on a fixed income. And I was riding with a driver and. Uh another passenger and I, we kinda vibed and we was talking and. Another passenger came in and he started talking about the blacks and how he. Was born here and immigrants and the protests and it really got a little uh sticky there. And you know, it let me know that a lot of people have stuff for the free people. Y'all say black. And uh the discussion came up too about the affirmative action. That you know, if he goes to apply um and he doesn't get accepted in the school, it's okay. But however, when the blacks apply, oh, it's discrimination, it's because of that. And I said, let me tell you something. Affirmative action has not really been beneficial at all to the black folks. And let me tell you, my lineage line helped build this country. My grandfather was not allowed to continue his education. Because the boys in his family had to work the crops, they were sharecroppers. And I have footage that I interviewed my grandparents. Many years ago, I have to find it, it's just very interesting. And ironic, my grandmother didn't, still was kinda leery, she kept telling my grandfather. Wait, stop talking so much about that, that girl filming us. You know, because like I said, the town now is really, really regressed. And nobody has put anything in it and. They're waiting for like all the older people to kinda transition, now they just started. Renovating the schools and they have top of the line things and like my uncle Charles said, like it wasn't like that. When he was a kid. And now he noticed that, you know, now it's white kids up in there, you know, mixed, now they done fixed it up and they put all of that stuff. And here, we're so preoccupied about a museum and. The history and definitely some monies going on. You know, there, there is a lot of things behind that and. It's so damn transparent that it's so blatant. You know, and that is awful. But however, you have a lot of Democrats, you know, asking for money. To sue Trump and you know, the constitution about birthright citizenship. And for my interpretation and knowledge, that was designed. For the free slaves. Because during that time, we wasn't even considered. Three fourths or or of of human. You know, on the real side. And I need to say this in closing, I hope this, my phone don't die. But I went out to Astoria, I lived out in Astoria briefly. I had to get the hell up out of there. But anyhow, and like I said, I've wrapped, I've emceed all over. And um and not only with them damn brothers that is known out there either. And when I took my grandchildren to the carnival, cause I used to take their mom to Astoria Park. And I'm a little better, I'll never get over losing my child and the things that happened. And how our people treat one another when they can't control you. And it's like an invisible whip all over again, they wanna whip you in shape. And you know, you supposed to, yes ma'am, yet I, I'm not. My grandparents went through that, my mother went through hell. I guess I'm the rebel of the family and you know, before the wax, the climate of it. A lot of us pre-kids were rebels and we had to survive. And it ain't about, you know, the middle class, when it crossed over, you know. They had their own different experience, but that foundation is totally different. And I can say that because when I was staying at the kids shelter. Uh Queens Society Prevention of Cruelty for Children. Ironically, all the children from Five Burrows were in Queens. So that's another thing, um another fact. But when I took the kids to the carnival, we were only a speck. You know, you had all, I was like, damn, well ICE didn't come out here. People couldn't speak the language, English, you know. Might have had a little toddler and was pregnant again. And you know, they looked more dressed than we did. And when it was over, shots was fired. And I don't think it was us. So that was very concerning, really was. And again, we're distracted on what's going on here. I know for me, even though I got a bad back and you know, things, I've started planting a garden. Because if you stay ready, you may never gotta get ready. But there's a lot of things going on and I just don't trust the Democratic Party because I've reached out. You know, when this happened, when, when COVID happened, occurred. And I needed uh devices for my grandchildren. I was told, and both of them have special need and top of, on top of trauma. I was informed that. They weren't entitled. And I reached, holy hell, I emailed some everybody, I know de Blasio was too through with me. And he had his little crony that had a beef with me when I first went to the city. Was told to get off the welfare roll and I did that. I had a degree and I had some training and I definitely had skills. And I was in private sector first. And I had taken civil service exams and then I wanted to help other people and it's just our kind. And you know, it's about especially the men with the women. Or period, when there's an agenda for power and control. People don't care who they step on and how they go about getting, you better not complain. Well, I was in hip hop. And I did shows and had people come and was on flyers. Two separate different kinds of flyers, one with the name on, one with not, without. And pack the house and because I asked to be paid, I couldn't perform. Yeah, and I still have like witnesses and as time goes on, when I can get on StreamYard. I'll be uh, you know, bringing uh speakers up. And um you know, for the confirmation and the audacity of. These guys wanting to have me in court. And I did uh attempt. And filed a petition in uh federal court under the Adult Survivors Act. Rightfully so, but the trauma was so stringent and even with me with a background as a paralegal. I have two grandchildren with special needs and that requires a lot. And you know, things come up in the time that it requires and the emotional. Impact of so many things suppressed. Was horrendous, I even got sick again, I got sick with COVID. One of my daughters caught sepsis. And I really believe it's like that dark energy, so I've had to put some light, some good energy out and. Also, you know, whatever somebody tries to send back, send to me, that's ill harm, send it back to them. You know, that reversal kind of stuff, because that's how deep this is. And I found that out, you know, with the whole. Thing with the hip hop thing. And I really believe that and the music too. And I think that, you know. It's just ridiculous. You know, how people will try to undercut and cut someone's, you know. Chords off because they not going along with their get along bull crap. Angie Stone in sequence came from the south, the south was rapping. Too, and it wasn't because of New York and it wasn't because of the Bronx. And there's a lot of conspiracy. And you know, it's just my opinion and I could be wrong. But there's a lot of criminality going along there and it's a whole big freaking enterprise too. That's what it gi- that's what it's given, in all facets. It's like people are being, it's the pay to play. And they're being programmed on what the narrative is, what they want and how they want it. And it's all political as well connected. And it's also the cronyism, it's the people that went to the high school. And it doesn't even exclude the mayor of New York, is very deep. So when it comes to that party and the people and even when I was discussing with one of the passengers. You know, in this car yesterday, she said that I'm not, I'm not just voting for people because they're black. But I'm not either and I changed my entire party. Because I remember somebody inquiring whether or not I voted for Biden. Calling me, calling me and you know, I told him, listen, I'm here, it's COVID. I have little things for my grandkids, I can't get out, the home attendants are no longer here. You know, cause their doctor said everybody has to go. You know, because they didn't know how bad it was going to be. And you know. And they had somebody drop some mask off to me, few masks, I was thankful. And a couple of cans of food and this was from the campaign of hunger. When I was able to get out and go to the pantry, it was a whole different thing, there was no meats, no nothing, I was like, this is an insult. I still got pictures of it. Under de Blasio's administration, oh, it's just a lot, it's just a lot. You know, it's a lot of things that's going on presently that. We, my family deserves reparations. And we're so distracted. And others, hip hop could have been a force to be reckoned with. When I go to St. Albans, I don't see no community center, I know LL has the uh basketball thing at O'Connell Park. Whereas I'm the only female that I know of early on at MC there. But I don't have a mural there because I didn't cut a record because of all of the shystiness that, you know, entailed. In the business, mu- the music industry and hip hop, period. And someone else's mural was there because they knew somebody. Which is crazy. You know, I respect the artist, but the fact is the fact. And um I see down Hollis Avenue. Like things could have been, you know, invested. And you know, people to say, well Jade came back to the hood, he looked out the hood, you know, but. What was really going on with Jade that he had to resort to doing certain things? To feed his family, to maintain that image. It was awful. So me not going crossing over was a blessing because, no, I couldn't be used and no. I didn't like no idea of working for the city of New York and being used in it, in a form of slavery. And I'm working for free. Or to get you ahead and I stay back. It's kinda ironic when you run into the similar personalities or narcissistic people. And then they'll label you and blacklist you and blackball you and I'm alright with that, cause I feel better. Cause like I said. My parents worked, even though my mother had mental health issues, she worked two jobs, but her spending was crazy. And those shifts, those mood shifts. And my, my mother wasn't really able to keep any of her children and she had three of them. And I'm the only girl and the youngest. Truth be told. Yeah, so. It is really, really bad out here. And we definitely have to be alert. Because the president-elect Trump, they say he's a madman, well, everybody was mad. Don't matter whether or not it's Democrat or Republican, it really don't give a difference. But you know, one thing I'm not mad about is that ICE. And you know, all of this funding is carte blanche, my credit is bad because of. The services my family was supposed to receive, including my daughter and grandkids. And black folks effed up and they didn't wanna look bad in front of massa. So they'll do anything instead of being corrective action and righting the wrong. They'll stay it wrong, they'll, they'll keep it wrong and then they'll try to be strong about it cuz and they wrong at the same time. Which is awful. And here these people are able to get cars and all of that. My car broke down, I wasn't able to get a new car. But I survived. Because that's what is in the lineage. Some people don't survive. Probably lots of people didn't make it. Cuz they were preyed upon. They weren't given the resources, the availability. You know, look at Farmers Boulevard. And all of those properties that Lisa Brown used to. Live over there across the street from the Red Black and Green Rock and her brother. Forgot her brother's name, her brother was gay. When we was young, he was gay. You know, so it's not a matter of anybody being gay and what their preference is. But you don't prey on children. And things like that, even on my block around the corner on Ludlow. You know. There was, uh, uh, gay women, lesbian. You know, you know, it's not been a big secret. But it seemed like whatever was going on up in the Bronx, that was some ish. But, um. The thing is that a lot of funding could have been given back to the communities, even, even with, uh. The junior high school that Jay-Z attended and, uh, Williamsburg. The principal is black, but a lot of the coaches. And, um, some of the teachers. And gym teachers have requested that Jay-Z come back. And Jay hasn't even been over there. So, like. I'll probably have another discussion that I'll elaborate on, you know. And deep, in-depth conversation about what has hip hop really done. To these people. I'm talking about the originators, not, you know, not the Caribbean's. The Southerners. That's fruitful thought. But when all is said and done, I don't think that we'll ever be compensated for all the damage that has been done. Because once again. It's been evident that we're always the one on the last toll and pole. So, you know, with the B and T awards. And someone saying about the immigration, we don't need to be involved in that. We got our own fight, I know I got my own fight. I've had over thirty home health aides in one year. And that's for another discussion. But anyway, my battery is, uh, dying and I need to charge it and I'm exhausted. I've been running for two days and, you know, I don't have the help that I really need. And I just do what I need to do. So. At the end of the day, I'm keeping an eye out on this reparation commission. And I have, you know, drafted. An additional information for them. But I need to proofread it because my brain doesn't function like it used to. After the loss of my daughter and the, um. How can I say, um, the off of my godson six weeks later, he was nineteen. And all of this was covered up and then his mom. You know, sometime later. In twenty twenty-two, I believe it is. She was found decomposing. And I had to show up for everything. And again, a lot of promotions, people were promoted. People were covered up. And it's disgusting. So at that, I am Tampa Honda Mike, you have a blessed evening. Till next time.